Good evening, welcome to the Town and New Hope Planning Board's meeting on October 15th, 2014. First up is our review and approval of minutes on September 22nd. Hello, Peter.
Hi.
No, no, we wouldn't approve the minutes without you. Anybody have any comments on it? Now accept a motion to approve the minutes of September 22nd.
So moved.
Eliel.
Second.
Thank you, Augusta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. There are no public hearings scheduled tonight. Session for public comment. We should have other than any public hearings. Anybody wish to make any public comments?
Yes. I'm Eric Scott from 28 Cedar Ridge Road. At the last planning board meeting, Vince Lee from 30 Cedar Ridge Road and I presented photos showing what occurred after a rainfall on July 2nd and July 3rd. These were certainly not 25, 50, or 100-year rainfalls. These were just routine summer rainfalls. And the photos demonstrated the water roaching out culverts that divide our properties. There are two 20-footage culverts that are between us. Those were broached and then flooded his road, preventing access to the way in and out of his property. I want those photos best to be presented, in the board has to be presented, and there are copies with our Kelly.
Right.
Question is, if this occurred after just a routine, one of them will summer rainstorm, what are we going to expect if there's development on that property? I'm told from my property and Mr. Stutz's property, when trees are cut, soils disturbed, impervious surfaces are weighed down, sewers, septic systems, and rain gutters and roots are drained water directly downhill onto our properties. The plan that they had submitted just prior to the September 22nd meeting, the revision of their plan, was reviewed by our engineer from Hudson Dollar Land Design, who found that first of all, there are no substantive changes in the plan from previous submissions. And secondly, there still is no adequate way to deal with the excess water, the rainwater that we expect to be coming down that hillside under both of our properties and further damaging our land. So those are our concerns.
Do you have a copy of any, of the report that you could share with us?
Of?
Of the report that you got that you said from, I forgot from who.
From our Hudson Dollar. No, but I'd be happy to get that for it to not break. I can certainly find that.
Yeah, you could email it to Kelly.
By Friday call.
Alright, cool.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else wish to make any comments? Hearing none, we'll move into the application review. L.P., come on up. We got a memo from Dave last week, a review of the application. October 9th. Dave, why don't you walk us through the memo?
October 9th? I don't think I got that either.
I didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
I got it. I got it.
Okay, we'll make sure everybody has it in their phone. I'm not sure. Those things do happen, but.
I actually reminded me of last day.
No, it wasn't. No, it was emails.
No, I didn't.
This is.
Well, anyway.
Okay.
High points. There's a couple items, there's steep slopes on the property. There's a couple items that have to be addressed, have to be added to the plan to meet the criteria of the permit so it can be reviewed. We have to refer this to the Environmental Conservation Board as part of that review process. Planning Board will be the reviewing authority for it, but we'll get comments from ENCB on it. Some drainage issues to be addressed. The ditch that we were concerned about, we suggested that ditch checks be put in the ditch. They were. We don't have the results of the hydraulics on that, how much that actually slowed it down, we're asking for that. There are some details on the ditch that were discrepancies that need to be clarified. We missed the dose.
Where are you now, Dave?
I'm at the bottom of page 2, onto page 3 here.
Okay.
Yeah, it is four foot wide now, because we did slow the water down with the check dams. The stone filling, that is a DOT standard spec.
But there's two stone fills. You look at the detail and it doesn't quite make sense.
Originally, we had a heavier one because we have a slower velocity now, or more with the light stone filling instead of the medium. So that, I'll take care of that. That's mine. We did get, I thought that was in the report, we did get the velocity down to, I think it was like 6 CFS or something like that. Don't think I have a copy of the report with me.
I haven't seen the report.
Five feet per second. Here's a copy that should have been submitted with those plans. July 22nd. We do have the R-tank system reclamation along the bottom of the property. We have mitigated 100% of the increased runoff due to impervious areas. We did have a field meeting out there with the planning board members. The water that drains off and through this property does not go into the swell that goes underneath, or the swell and the culvert underneath Mr. Stutz's driveway, is actually intercepted and taken through the large culvert underneath the property driveway for a lot 1.111. That's lofted.
Yeah.
Right. We did submit the assessment forms, the archaeological. We put the cross sections on as required for steep slopes. I mean, I guess, you know, we want to keep going, Dave, but we are, you know, I think substantially compliance with the code enough to get at least a public hearing going here.
Well, the steep slope requires, has a list of criteria, as you know, and there's just a couple things yet to have to be shown to be able to get it to the ENCB so they can, we can refer that and look at that. We also, you had said that you had a survey that showed drainage areas and what was going where. You mentioned that a couple meetings ago.
The swells, where the swells go, yes.
Okay. Do you have a plan for that? You said you had a surveyor that was.
I had a survey, yes. He picked up those, the swells that we walked, we were out there with the planning board.
That'll be very helpful.
He picked those up, followed them to, like I said, to where they discharged by that culvert. Okay. I'll provide that. We did label the swells on sheet 2. You want to, just how much?
Requirement is that you give a breakdown of the areas on that.
Okay.
You used a 25-year storm event for your storage, and I'd ask for some justification of that 25-year storm frequency.
We used a 50, I think. Again, you didn't get this report, that's part of the problem.
I got an earlier one where you were using 25.
Right, I did revise that. You know what, I'll go through your calculations, I'll provide it directly to you.
I see the 50-year here.
Yeah, but there was some calculation that went along with it.
Good. I was asking for some information on the maintenance for the R-tanks, which is rough to identify. There's some ports to go in it, you check it to see if there's sediment in the bottom.
And you can also vacuum it out through those ports too.
Vacuum it out.
We will include those on the next submission.
We need to have some kind of note that states that maintenance will happen, who's going to do it, how often, and that needs to be in the deed. I mean, we really need to have that tied down because if that doesn't work, we have problems.
That's true.
There's soil testing that needs to be done. Trench DVC requires that you do the infiltration threat test at the bottom of your infiltration trench, and you see that. Looks like you sized it off of the curb test that you had for the. Waste fighters.
I actually did not, I think, I have to look, it's been a while. I don't think I actually included the infiltration or deducted the infiltration, although we hit up the whole volume, which means it would work even with a 120-minute work, which is, you know, the longest that they allow for infiltration.
You've got an overflow out the top.
Right.
So what happens if you get a second storm? And you got it full?
Well, if it handles one storm, a 24-hour storm, I mean, it's going to infiltrate within 24 hours if.
That's what I need to know. How soon is it going to infiltrate?
Understood, okay.
I think that maintenance note is really important.
Yes.
I think if we can see those, the plans that you have, that shows the ditches where they flow to, that's good information. What is being proposed is right before the drainage leaves the lot on the downslope, there's some infiltration trench that has varied tanks, that the tanks are sized, the length of the trench and the depth of the tanks are sized to be able to take the difference between the runoff that's there now and the increased runoff that would be after the site was developed with the yard and the trees, or the yard and the roofs and that blocks and whatever. That's the way it's designed. It was on a 25-year storm, it's now on a 50-year storm.
So that they, anything of impervious surfaces that are going on, on the site would be drawn to these.
Caught and before they leave the property then. The ditch that runs through the property, we've got that down, it was 50.
50 CFS, yeah.
Per second, which is the.
That's a pretty high velocity. The medium stone filling that we used, the DNT spec, those are 80 to 100-pound stones. I mean, they're pretty big. But now that we've slowed the water down, we've, you know, dropped the stone size too. So, but the check that lived down to 5 feet per second, and that will prevent any erosion in that swell.
When it leaves the property, it shouldn't erode.
Shouldn't be going down at that fast speed and cause erosion.
When it leaves the property, if the slope there isn't protected, there could be some problems on the property next to it, but at least it's got a good start.
So procedurally, we have to take care of the steep slope items before we can proceed with the public hearing, is that correct? We need the steep slope permit first?
That has to, you have to get that permit before the final or before the preliminary approval.
Okay. Okay, and that permit is through this board too, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
What I would propose, really, and see if we can rule this as well, numerous changes. I know you just saw Dave's memo now. Was there anything earth-shattering in that that will take a long period of time to develop? I didn't think so.
No.
I would pose, if you can get all those changes in, and if you can get them into the board, by November 4th? No. Well, let me get back on that. Yeah, November 4th. Okay, then we can schedule a public hearing for November 25th meeting. And that will give us the public and everybody else the ample time for review of it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Before, before we go, I got board members, I just want to make sure that anybody has any other questions on it that we, I know we didn't get the memo on it, but basically, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just to clarify one thing, you mentioned that the runoff won't go through Mr. Stutz's property that we've been hearing about, but you mentioned that it will go to another property?
His neighbor.
Yeah, okay, so what is that property?
They're, yeah, they have, the culvert that Mr. Stutz was talking about in front of his house, that he presented the photograph, the evidence and everything. The drainage from this site does not enter that stream.
Okay, but so, but then is it just like flooding the house next door? Just confused about that.
The stream crosses the property, but his property doesn't drain into that stream, basically. And that stream comes down between the lots and intercepts the mainstream, which is what, 6, 10 feet wide?
It's pretty big, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But it doesn't, it doesn't cross on the Mr. Stutz property.
Okay.
It crosses, it enters the stream before that.
But again, we've, you know, we've mitigated any increases due to our development with this proposal for up to a 50-year storm, you know, pre substantial rain. So, you know, that's for subdivision of this side, you know, substantial work that is really required, but, you know, we're willing to do it.
The two things that, for this is, one is we want to make sure that any runoff caused by the houses or driveways, it doesn't add to the water that's going across the property now.
Yeah.
And the second part of it is.
Slowing it down.
Slowing down the stream is, to that extent, it won't, there's no place to put the volume of water, but to slow it down would reduce any erosion that's associated with it, or mitigate it as much as you could.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's just we're hearing two different things from two, you know, from two different people, and I'm just not, you know, you've hired consultants.
I think the update, we asked for showing the swells on that, so what I would think is that when we see the documentation and go to public hearing, we can trace on a picture basis where that water is coming from and where it's going to.
Okay.
Several member of members were out there as they walked outside, and that was very helpful for all the school.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm also eager to see what the ENCB has to say about it too, so.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why, and it gives the ENCB, ENCB reviews the steep slopes issues, that's a requirement.
So we have a public hearing to get the steep slopes permit, isn't there?
Well, we'll, ENCB will review it, will issue a permit, say everything goes, they have to building on steep slopes, okay?
The subdivision hearing of the steep slopes permit hearing should be noted together.
Okay. So we'll do them both on that for those two issues on it, and I think this will give, I want to make sure that Charlie has an opportunity to get all Dave's comments incorporated, so when we have the final set of plans in front of us, we see all the issues that we want, we're talking about, and anybody reviewing it can also see all those issues. That's why I'm stretching it out a little bit, because I want to make sure that we give people an opportunity for review, which is based on our schedule. You know, the other thing is, it's just a little bit too quick on the other one, that's why I wanted to go into it. But submission of data has to be in by November 4th, we can then have the public hearing scheduled through November 25th. Kelly can, as you know, have to do all the public hearing, but we'll do it for both of them, steep slopes and for the two lots over there. You got any questions or anything else that you didn't quite do when you're going through with it, please, you know, contact Dave or us.
This is something that, the schedule of public hearings has to be voted on, but.
Well, we will, I just want to make sure. Did I capture everything or do you capture everything?
I hope so.
Can I ask for a point of clarification? November 26th?
5th.
Before Thanksgiving?
No, it's Monday.
Monday to 24th.
Whenever, I think we're off. I get the, yeah, I think all that, yeah, yeah, whole calendar's as well.
That Monday before Thanksgiving.
Wait, yeah. That's the next year.
So this is Monday?
Right, it'll be Monday before Thanksgiving.
Sorry, I know to blame.
Birthday? 24th birthday.
You still celebrating though?
That's what. I'll last as long as I can.
We will, the planning board, we will get the October 9th memo. No, it's alright. Should be sending it out again. They just lucked out, you got my markings on it. This was the ones who signed it, so this was here, okay? I think we're all done for that. No, I promised you 7:30.
Okay, great.
She's having, she's having a fancy dinner, and she wanted to digest her food before she had a rush. So I said we wouldn't start until 7:30.
Just want to make sure it is. Because I'm looking at the, I don't even know what today's date is.
See, this says October 15th. I go to the folder.
Yeah, it's not that, it says 16th, right?
It says October 16th. Oh.
That's your first problem. So we don't even know, we don't know.
Your folder.
I see what it is for you.
Yeah. Okay, folks, anybody can figure out what day today is, and then let us know, and let us know what the meeting date is in November, right before Thanksgiving.
24th.
24th. I have a motion to have a public hearing on LP builders for November 24th.
So, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. What was the road condition? What's the road condition?
200 feet.
Well, he's already at 125 feet on this.
But he's becoming less, less.
Well, didn't he have a hole?
No, no, he just said.
Dave said it's good, and I didn't say Kelly.
Well, oh, that was his original.
20 feet.
Oh, oh.
I think it's.
Oh, okay.
You did, you did job.
What?
What's that?
Your email's malfunctioning.
Are we not doing this?
Oh, Patty's on the ball.
Oh, oh, right, yeah. That's a dream.
Have you digested? Have you finished your?
I made Britt feel like they.
Oh. Come on up, since I mean, go ahead, why don't we do Whispering Pines, Whispering Woods first? Flap around, and then we'll do a lot line later, after that. Slow down.
Plus, I saw the engineer in the parking lot, I'm like.
Wouldn't do that.
Here we are again.
Good to see you two nights in a row, Dave.
I know, anyway, yes, yes, I should.
Although last night we were together till almost 10 o'clock.
You're welcome.
So I can't remember what we were waiting for, where we left off.
Well, there were a couple of items that the planning board was looking for, and they were told that we didn't necessarily have to come back until we had our board of health approval, but we figured that if we came back now, discussed how we had addressed all the rest of the planning board concerns, and that the board felt comfortable with that, then we would feel a lot more comfortable knowing that the only thing we needed to come back for was the board of health.
I think we had also maybe discussed getting approval pending the board of health, so did that maybe pass.
And I guess that's probably what we discussed at the board tonight. So the comment letter that we had received from the board last time was to, one of the things, number one, was to have the number of students limited to occupants staying based on the board of health approval. So what we ended up doing on the map to try to clarify that, and that was, this is one of the things I wanted to discuss with the board to make sure it was clear enough, is that we are looking to the board of health right now to approve five employees and 25 students, so we listed that on there and said in parentheses initially, because that's what we're looking for right now. But we also put another note on the map saying that maximum occupancy not to exceed number as mandated by the Ulster County Board of Health based on septic, field design, and approval. So we're looking to, again, totally in the future, expand without having coming back to the board, knowing that that number will be limited by what the board of health will allow us to have on the site. And I just wanted to make sure, you know, if you think there's some way that I can make that clear, or if it's not clear enough already, I don't want to cause a problem for a future building inspector or board or anybody from that perspective, so I'm, you know, looking to George and Dave if you think that's clear enough, or if there's something else that you think I.
Clear enough with respect to the house part, but as I recall, there's three classrooms.
But does that recall those three classrooms and there's a multi-use building? And multi-use is not intended to be a classroom?
It is, it's not to be used as a full-time classroom. It's used as a...
I mean, is there a limit on the number of students you can have in one classroom?
Well, that would be based on the fire inspector telling us what the occupancy would be.
Okay, but I guess the concern is if you, if you convert it to multi-use to a classroom, it would increase your student capacity by one percent?
25%.
One of those two.
Yeah, I know.
So, and that drives a couple of other things related to the site in terms of the number of cars that would be coming and going, the students that are on the property and so on. So if you're, if you're limiting the student, the students to classrooms, you have a certain number. If you convert that multi-use building to a classroom, you're then increasing that. And I guess that's another, that's a different issue than the health department.
Right, I think last time, what we had discussed was the fact that the reason that they want to be able to expand in the future is they're starting with young students. As those young students grow and enter into a different program, they have siblings that are coming along behind them that the parents are looking for an opportunity to be able to place them in the same school as their siblings are. Unless they are able to expand the school, they're not going to have the opportunity to do that. So as far as traffic and so forth, the, you know, the goal is that you're keeping it within the same family. So you're not increasing the number of cars who's coming by bus or still coming by bus. So basically, you know, the, the impact is going to be interior to the building mostly generated into the septic system, which is why the Board of Health was what we had tied. And plus, of course, she has to have whatever permits she needs from New York State Education Department for the number of students that she has in there.
I, if I recall, George, and I'll go back on it, that the three classrooms could have 15 students in each without converting the multi-purpose room.
Right, that was our goal. And then the one room would be left kind of bare to use for like yoga, music, art.
They would go into the room, come back out to the classroom, and another class would go in and come back out. That would be the after-music room or whatever. And that's, so the 45 was kind of the, the number that we were...
That was our maximum that we sought for the house, based on the number of toilets and sinks also.
That's based on the three classrooms.
Three functioning full-time classrooms and then the one room to, like, for napping and things that are needed at various times. Or like an after-school room, so it's not disturbing my main classroom, that they can go there at the end of the day.
So I think from the enforcement, you know, from the site plan standpoint, my main concern is that if we're three classrooms, 15 students, that the classrooms be identified and your multi-use space being not, you know, not a classroom, or not a classroom without approval.
Yeah, what I'm, what I would be looking for on this, I think, is that for final approval that we get what the Board of Health says that can do on, in a classroom and file. Now, if something changes and the Board of Health comes and says, well, you want to expand, and go back to the Board of Health and they said, yeah, you can increase it. Then I want some documentation in our planning board file that says, here's an updated letter from the Board of Health for this, for these number of students, et cetera. So we have on record that whatever, whatever number of students she has in a classroom, we have Board of Health approval for, for that number. So...
So in theory, the ultimate build-out would be 45 students with Board of Health approval, 45 students is for the septic system?
Right.
Okay, so if we say that, then we know what the limits are?
Yeah. I just, yeah, again, this is something from an agency that doesn't go through a planning board, but I want some documentation from, from the agency in our planning board files that said, or the building inspector files that says that this is allowed. So one of the conditions would be any variation in that Board of Health approval document gets filed with the...
So we will give you the initial, what they say now, and then if we do any additions to the septic, then we will give you the additional approval.
Right, if they come up and update it three years down the road, we get a copy of that. That's, that's what I was looking for.
But there will be a maximum number on the plan also?
Of the 45.
Okay.
So 45, excuse me?
Students.
45 is a hard maximum. Regardless of what the Board of Health says, two yes for the 45.
You mean if the Board of Health said 50?
Yeah, it's still the 45.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, 45 is our hard number right now.
Forty-five students, how many staff is that meaning?
Well, we would add five staff, I think, included what were needed for the 45, right?
The staff is included?
Yes, we would need more than five staff for 45.
And it's still one on nine, which is...
What's, what's the speed limit on that now?
35?
Yeah, posted speed limit is 35 miles an hour. We had, yep, up on the top. And again, as we stated, we had spoken with Chris Marks already to see if he cared which entrance you came in and out of. And he didn't really care, so we did it the way that it made most sense for the passenger side to doors. Usually the parents like to let the kids out of the passenger side door, so that's how we did our in and out. We've already, working with him for the process for putting up signs for school ahead at that point in time. He needs documentation also from the State Education Department before he can put those signs up. He's been very helpful in that regard.
They do need an extension. Yeah, an extension.
If they were far across the street. Pardon?
No, what's wrong?
So Payne falls apart from the street is the only one.
Right. I'll have the big folder, you know?
Yeah, I...
Do you have the big folder for...
I don't have the statement on this, but you don't have one.
Anybody have a folder?
If it's not, if it wasn't in my initial transmittal, then it wasn't done. So I guess, well, if we have not already submitted one, I'll make a note of it and we'll get one submitted.
Where does the school bus drop off?
At the street.
Yeah, right at the top of the driveway. We requested it be usually on this side just because the office window views the length of the driveway and we can see the children. But it needs to go to either side, except for purpose.
Is that one of those things you can get a school bus stop ahead and sign for?
I'm sure that that would be part of the signings that we're requesting from the transportation.
I don't have one, so we need to add this. I may even talk to you in the address.
Payne? Well, yeah, I will break on it. One of the other discussion points that we had at the last meeting was with regard to fire access to the site. So on the two days that they had the fire trucks visiting the site, we, the applicants took photographs of the trucks doing the turning radiuses and everything's been in there real well. Tom felt pretty confident about that at the last meeting, but now they've got photo documentation of it.
Just happened to be in the case.
Just happened.
Hey, why not? What is there? Hi. I see, um... Pardon?
I don't think so. No candy.
No, we don't give out candy.
Only fresh, yeah, fresh.
They gave stickers and hats.
Um, that you widen it up, so it's going to be 12 feet on either side?
Yes.
Okay.
Need to mention that, Patty, on the plan?
We had put a note on here, driveway to be widened to a minimum of 12 feet for one-way directional traffic as recited in zoning code. We put that underneath the parking schedule. You also want me to dimension it right on there? I can do that.
Now, so school buses won't pull through the driveway and cars?
The busses don't come in. We need the buses at the driveway. A teacher always needs a bus.
We verified the location of the wet area, which the board had asked for to make sure that we had the, met the criteria for the wet area. Showed visiting septic area, noted the proposed fence to be relocated. Revised the parking and added the handicap spot.
Is where? I know where it is.
And I can put an H inside this spot.
Yeah, that's what I started, I just thought the whole spot was here. Yeah.
Just six. The other question was which way the drainage went. So we added all the inverse to the culverts and showed that it's continuing to drain to the south, pretty much the way we thought based on what the contours were showing. And we submitted the site lighting details with the last submission, photographs of the whole site. I believe those were...
Did you, just the walkway you have, I think last time we looked at, there was a ramp coming up. Is that walkway flat or is that ramp, this one here? This one, because you moved it from here to here.
Correct, yeah, this portion of it is already existing because this walkway, there is a step to go up. This is ramped to be able to be handicapped accessible.
Yeah, okay, so that's doorway back there.
Yep, yeah, if you come in this way, there is a step.
Okay, I just, you know, that...
And I think that also showed in the photographs that had some of the site lighting, you could see the step.
Right, I did see that. But you moved it, that's why.
Right, yeah, that's why we had it moved a little ramp inside.
Okay. Lyle, anything? No, I got it. Peter? Tom? Iselle?
Nope.
He does?
Nope.
Dave?
I'm just, I want to make sure that we get that maximum on here so that at some point they'll come back because it is a special use permit that we have to look at the compatibility of the neighborhood.
Right.
On second or third floors.
He just wants to fill in the first floor right now.
My contractor already said, no way. Put too much stuff up there, you're not going up.
Yeah. Okay, this is a...
So I guess if I can, I would change the note to say maximum occupancy not to exceed 45, only if allowed by Ulster County Board of Health based on septic field design and approval. Is that...
Yeah, I think the...
Will that do it?
The Health Department will govern this property, but what if we got sewer?
You're saying maximum capacity 45, period?
Only, right, maximum occupancy not to exceed 45, only if allowed by the Ulster County Board of Health based on... Because it won't be 45 if the Board of Health won't allow. So it's, it's two-pronged. It's not to exceed 45, and that 45 will only be permitted provided the Board of Health approves it.
But isn't it supposed to be 45 students and five staff?
Right, exactly. Forty-five students.
I just sort of imagine that you might have events where parents would come. And if you have 40 students, you could have 20 families, which would be 40 parents possibly, plus 40 kids, 80 kids plus staff.
That'd be a nice day because they don't fit.
I don't, I don't think for an hour-long open house, the Board of Health looks at it. I think they look at what the general, you know, just as when you design a three-bedroom house, if you have five parties a year where you have 200 people there, you don't design the septic system based on that party. You base it on what your normal facility is.
I was thinking more like parking or, you know, if you had an event there and you wanted to... I, I don't think, through the site distance we have, I don't think we want to see parking on the road to go to events. You know, it seems like it's a rural road with, you know, it's not, it's not terribly limited, but 300 feet is not...
Right now, when they have had open houses, trying to encourage growth in this new program, you know, you can see when you're looking at, down along the driveway, there's huge center field, people park down in there. We're certainly not showing it as parking spaces because it's not to be used as parking on a regular basis.
It's an occasional thing, but I'm just saying that like, you know, you're on a...
The off-street.
A dark and rural road and that, that's, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Parking on the road would change everybody in the neighborhood's experience of school, you know?
And again, I think, you know, that the 45, right now you have 15? How many students join there now?
Right now, we have a maximum of 16, if we have, you know, counting our school age students, so.
Right, so the goal is that that, right, if everybody's, and the goal, and that has been accommodated extremely well with the onsite parking that they have right now. So again, the goal is as the school is expanding, hopefully there will be some new families, but there also is primarily, you start, you, you take care of a family. So, you know, quite a bit of it will be repeat children from the same parents coming in the same car. So not, you know, I understand what your concern is. But so far, I mean, to date, you've been able to accommodate in your safety.
Because we, like we said, we, they do already, we, we train them.
I'm just trying to think if I was living next door or down the road, something about...
And there really is nobody in close proximity. You know, if you, there is nobody between them and Onclave Drive. You know, there's no dwellings in there. And we did show the approximate location of the nearest house to the north, which is about 200 feet away. Wooded in between.
Wooded.
And a little bit of a hill, so I can't see them and they can't really, I mean, I can see their house from our house, but we can't see the, your street.
How many of these events would you, like an open house, do normally happen?
An open house is really usually more like a day where you invite, you knew he was going to go to the school. Like a back-to-school night, I wouldn't do the whole school. I would do just a classroom at a time because we would want to focus on that group. So I, I have no vision of a event that has...
So you don't have a parent-teacher night like a, like a public school does where you end up with 500?
I would not do it on the same night because I would want to be available for both classrooms as the owner of the school, and I wouldn't be able to be in more than one place at a time. So I would split those up and have them separate because families also have children in more than one classroom, wouldn't be able to be in both classrooms. It wouldn't be fair to them, then they would have to choose if they, oh, well, no one will ever go to the preschool because it's more important to go to the elementary student, then the poor preschooler, then... So we wouldn't do that because I already have that happening for parents who had to go to Poughkeepsie Day instead of to my school, you know? So we don't want the parents to have to do that. We want them to stop driving to Poughkeepsie and come to us and keep their family in one place.
Was there, is there some way that we can put that into a note that says this is the way it typically will operate? That, that events will be, you know, how many all-school events would you have? Because it seems like if you have one room, you can dominate the whole property.
I mean, I feel like you, because it even... Right, I mean, such a big concern. I don't know, Lyle, how do you, do you feel a little bit better about it? I mean, I don't think we need a whole map, you know?
No, I, I... I'm not, you know, I just think that if you went beyond a certain level, that it would require a revisit, you know, of the impact on the neighborhood.
I understand. I could just tell you that the number one priority for me is safety.
A few people know about it.
I'm not going to have 45 students running around at the same space at the same moment with parents and everything else. It's too much to manage. I wouldn't choose to do that. I would rather keep things separate and manageable.
One concern the board has to have is it's approving the use.
I understand.
It's approving the ownership per se. So you may do things a certain way because it's the right thing to do.
Right.
But if the next person comes along and buys this property from you, it may decide they're going to manage it a different way.
Sure.
So if there's, if there is a concern about parking on the street, put something like, it's not, normally there should be no parking on the street, some special events once in a while, and something along that line, which memorializes...
Memorialize, that's, probably the note that's we're looking for is that something that's to minimize any parking on the street. Like you said, you have the center on, that's usually where the parking's going to go anyway because nobody wants to park all the way down to street level and walk. all the way down.
And walk, right.
So, but it gives building inspector or somebody else that comes out, and if someone complains about, you know, it's, every weekend is ten cars on the street in front of your school, then we have something at least to go see and have to talk with you on it, that's what I'm going to try to...
Right, I understand. Do you have weekend events?
Um, I, I've had open houses, but again, that isn't, that's really to try to find a new family to come to the school, I try to do all of our school things on school days.
Days, you gotta keep focused on that. All right, anything else, Lyle?
No, that's it.
Peter?
No.
Tom?
No.
Iselle?
Yeah.
Eustace?
Okay. So, give a motion for site plan approval, um, but if we're limited to, uh, well, if we can agree for site plan approval, we can authorize the chairman to sign off on the maps, once we get the health department, uh...
So we make a conditional, something like that.
So, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, if anybody has any problem, rather than bring everybody back out for another night, um, because then the only thing would be, uh, the notes that you've taken on the map.
Right, I just want to make sure that I have them all, um, that the building layout shall remain at three classrooms with one multipurpose room, that the Board of Health approval must be submitted to the town, um, anytime the limit goes above the twenty-five, submit the Ag data statement, and, um, come up with a note to address no street parking, and change the note on the map that the maximum occupancy not to exceed forty-five students, and that Ulster County Board of Health approval must be obtained to increase over twenty-five students. Right, do as, two separate notes, each of it cleaner?
Right, the one thing we'll need to do is get the, we have to send out the Ag data statement, so that should be a condition that there's no comments or issues.
George, what did you say? I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
We have to send the Ag data statement...
Add the statement, notification, yeah.
So they're aware of it, and to bring any issues or concerns to our attention.
I can send a certified return receipt and submit a copy of that to the town, will that work?
Yeah.
I don't think there was an, wasn't an, because everybody checked, I think I checked that.
I thought we had that checked.
It's a form there, but I thought we checked it after we walked out of the meeting.
Okay, well, and again, if so...
I don't think it is, for some reason, I mean, there's a, there's definitely a big form across the street.
Yeah, that's what I asked, too, whether in the Ag district.
It's not really a farm, whether it's in the district or not.
It's gotta be five, it's within five hundred feet.
An operating farm, whether it's in the district.
So let's presume we have...
Yeah, it's within five hundred feet of operating farm, whether it's in the Ag district or not, so it still should be done, just...
And part of that is, is I think notifying you that there's a farm there, so if you're smelling manure, or spraying, or whatever, this farm is already there.
Yeah, the bee boxes, yeah.
All right, well, that's a condition, that we get the Ag statement notified and sent out.
Yeah, that if the Ag data statement is required, I will send it out certified return receipt.
And the condition would be no comments or issues?
Well, yeah, if we don't receive any comments, if, if we receive comments, that we need to...
Then we'll be back.
We'll be back, yeah.
So we need no comments, um, and we're still waiting on the Board of Health anyway, for the, for that.
Okay.
So...
Motion approved, Whispering Woods, Montessori School site plan?
Motion to approve, conditional approval.
Conditional approval.
Only condition is just stated.
Um, secret woods, not...
What?
They've checked it, no, see, secret woods.
I don't know, secret woods.
I do not have a record of secret woods, please.
Yeah.
For that condition, that written, which was just a one.
Yeah.
So you're, you're a secret now?
Yeah.
You're a secret now?
We can do it now. Got a copy of one, do you?
They don't have the second half.
Ah.
Oh, it's so close.
Oh, yes, because this was when they started not including the second half in the short form. Then we want, so I have to go and I, and now I print them out separately and attach them, but yes, there is not one on this. Do you have a blank one?
I have a blank one. This one. Part two.
Part two, yeah.
Will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Operating school now. Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Answers no.
Yep.
Will a proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? There isn't a critical environmental area there. Will a proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic, or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? Existing school. Operating now. Will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and if it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
We're not making any really changes on the building.
No changes.
We've actually improved with the LEDs and all, and everything is green that we're doing, so we're going to put solar someday, when we can afford it.
Will a proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies?
No.
Public-private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor, or fauna?
No.
Will a proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will a proposed action create a hazard or hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No. Okay. Based on the environmental assessment form, um, have a motion, um, for a negative declaration on the Whispering Woods, uh, Montessori School?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Now. Resurrect the, uh...
Conditions.
Everything you said before.
Everything you said before.
Everything.
Approve that the conditions we said before.
We have, um, conditions that tie the number of students to the Board of Health authorization that allow the number of students in, per classroom, initially at twenty-five, um, any changes to that Board of Health approval will be submitted to the building department.
Not to exceed forty-five.
Maximum note on the specifying that forty-five is the max, the number of students on, on, at the school, that we will receive an Ag district notification requirement, and we'll note also that street parking is not encouraged. You have anything else, Des?
Can we change that, um, student occupancy to maximum occupancy, just to forty-five, that's what she said?
No, we said forty-five. Forty-five with five teachers.
I think she said it was going to be forty-five, which included the stuff.
It was forty-five, because it's fifteen students per classroom.
Yeah, I know, but when I asked you, you said you included.
She might have, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I apologize, it was forty-five students.
It's forty-five, forty-five students, that's why I said students on that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, we're trying to get it right.
I thought it was a change.
We start doing conditions, uh, we lose track of anything very easily.
One condition is you file a copy of the Department of Education document with the building inspector when they apply for a building permit. Do you have that, do you have time to do building permit?
We're not doing any building.
You're not doing any interior work at all?
I've even hung the exit signs already. There's no interior workings to be done.
What will you get, it's from the Department of Education, approving?
The Department of Education has approved my application pending the town approval and the Board of Health approval, when I can submit this and the Board of Health approval, then they will give me the approval, and then the building inspector and fire inspector would have to come and make sure that I'm up to code, prior to me being allowed to open.
So prior to...
So there is a trigger, there is a trigger.
Right, but at this point, Stacy Del Reed, as the building inspector, would be the final code official to come and make sure everything was up to code.
Copy of the Department of Education approval, final approval, would be provided before you, to the town, before it's filed?
Yes.
Okay.
Does the Department of Education approve it, uh, is that revisited every couple of years, or is it just one time and that's it, or do they have to do it every five years or whatever?
The Department of Ed approval, I believe, is one time, and then it's the inspections and other things that keep me in check on a yearly basis.
And are they done by, or, who does that?
Department of Education.
They come themselves and do it, they don't rely on the town to do it?
Well, and the building inspector and the fire inspector are the ones that make sure that we're always up to the safety codes, and the health department makes sure whether they're up to the health department codes.
Well, that's right. Everybody.
Why not? Okay, you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Eustace, thank you, Peter. Any additional comments, questions? All those in favor? Yeah, I gotta sign this, I know.
You're really the applicant.
Should I just sign above you?
Yeah.
So we'll save your trip out for a cold Monday night in November.
Thank you.
So we'll get the modifications to the map, Department of Health approval, um, then I can sign off on that, and, uh, then you can go in. Department of Education gets them to sign off, then you can get Stacy to come in to the inspection, yeah. That's where the real order is, but, uh, I think, uh...
It should all happen, so I can have it working by next September.
I don't know, maybe in January, mid-season switch.
It's hard to start the first grade in January, but, you know.
No, no, well, you gotta get, well, we got, you got one hurdle done, okay?
I have one student who wanted to come tonight and say, if you're not sure, let me talk, because I'm getting a hundred... She said, I've gotten a hundred plus on every test, I will come and say, you gotta approve her, so I can come back.
Gee, if you set that up for it, we could've...
So be one car.
Okay, well, good luck with it.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate your support, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, being touched. Freddie can't believe it.
Thank you. Okay, switching gears, just a little bit, like, what?
We just keep going.
We just keep going.
Okay. Well, a lot of line change, huh?
A lot of line change.
Somebody wants to sell a lot, and finds out that his neighbor's done his property?
Well, actually, um, Tom Bogoski owns both of the parcels of land, he purchased the lot next to him, um, a few years ago, because he didn't want anybody building next door.
Okay.
So to protect himself, he purchased that lot, um, and what he also realized was that he, the septic area as shown by owner, um, by the condo and by the south line, he's not exactly a hundred percent sure that the septic is entirely on his property, and then he also had a concern that in the future, if he ever needed to expand the septic area, he wanted to make sure that he had enough room to do that, he's, um, given himself a little putting green, and he's got his hammock and his lean-to and his fire pit all onto his second lot.
Exactly, that's right.
You know, he decided at this point in time, um, it would be appropriate to try and remedy that problem. The property is in the A-three zoning district, so his initial lot is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, although we will be making it more conforming in lot width and area, it still will not be a hundred percent conforming lot, because he doesn't have the area to do so, but Lot Two will retain the three-point-three-six acres, and, um, we will not be impacting the location of the proposed, uh, house well or septic system as was designed on the previously approved filed map by the Lotline Division.
So he's adding twenty feet to his lot, and then his...
Twenty feet, um, in the frontage, um, when you come back here, he's about forty feet, when you come back here, he's about sixty-five, just because I wasn't, you know, with the septic area, I told him that he probably should do it to the entire cleared area, maybe it's clear there for a reason, and...
And his, his road frontage is also less non-conforming than he...
Correct, the road frontage will now be less non-conforming, but we made sure that we kept two-hundred-and-nine feet of road frontage on the remaining parcel, so that we didn't bring that into non-conformity. No, you wouldn't let me do that anyway.
Dave?
Need an Ag data statement, and it's, it's supposed to, uh, property that's in Ag district law. I'm missing a deed on the larger parcel, Patty, I got the one on the small one, but...
You didn't get a copy of the deed on the other one? Okay.
The, uh... Building inspector had a note, that she would like to have the concrete monument moved.
Concrete monument moved.
Concrete monument on the property line.
Oh, okay. Relocated to where the new corner will be?
Right.
Okay.
Well, off the highway, right away.
Well, it's right, yeah, it is right, actually, on the highway bounds, um...
No, if you put it on the corner of the property, you'd be out in the middle of the street.
Right, yes, thank you, um, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to remember what that, whether or not I can actually relocate it, or, yeah, or it's gonna have to be hammered out of there and a new one, right, exactly, because they're not always easy to relocate.
Does the power of any ground on, on the existing lot, or is it overhead?
It is, uh, I see an overhead wire going towards lands of detoning, and I do not see a note on here saying that it is serviced by underground utilities, so I'm going to say that it...
I just want to make sure it's not crossing over the new lot, you know?
Yep. And I'm not even seeing any utility poles on the street, so there's a good question, thank you.
There are utility poles on the street.
Yeah, there's gotta be. Yeah, they're, yeah. There might even be a photograph of it in here. You know when you go along the highways and you see these monuments that are standing up about two feet and they're about four inch square? And they have little...
Oh, like the markers, kind of?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's a property corner marker and they're pretty prominent.
Monument as opposed to a, as Stacy's...
Yes, yeah, as opposed to a rebar or a metal pipe. It's another form of, not a monument like in a cemetery.
Okay, I see. So...
Why, why do you want to move it? That's what I was asking, because...
Not want to be outdated once you...
Because it might mislead somebody to where the property corner is.
How old is the monument? Was it a monument that was set on this property or is it something that came with the road way back?
No, it definitely did not come with the road, it was set as a property corner marker.
Wanted to make sure it wasn't an old highway, highway mark.
Nope.
He's one of those roads that...
Old user highway.
Thank you, that's all right. Kind of thought it was, but it's confirmed it, okay. Tom, anything? No, any questions?
Just the shape of the, the shape of the line here, why is it, why is it angled that way?
I was trying to keep the lot as wide as possible. We needed to still maintain the two hundred foot of lot width where the proposed house eventually will go on the remaining lands.
And then you just cut in when you could.
Yes, because I wanted to make sure that, you know, all of the lawn stayed on that property and I didn't want to cut in at a ninety degree angle because I thought that would look even worse. So I tried to... And the rebar was already set there as a property corner previously as a line marker and so I felt that it was a good visual boundary that everybody knew where it was.
They actually could find it again.
Were there any red ones in the place?
Yeah.
The train is sloping away from the road, exactly.
Four eighty, I see that the elevation of the intersection of Van Nostrum and Burley is four twenty-one and it looks like we're four seventy at the road, so I'm going to say it looks like it's sloping back towards Plutarch. If you look at the tax map plot, there's a stream crossing Van Nostrum in the vicinity of Plutarch Road, so it looks like it's flowing back that way.
This lot do have a lot of trees on it.
Salt tree.
Salt tree, okay. A lot of those significant trees.
I checked down.
Peter, I honestly didn't, we didn't really survey all of that part, do you want to take it? Because that shows the topo lines on it too.
I see there's something behind, so I know that this isn't the start of the swamp.
No, no, no swamp.
I know there's some swamps.
Yes, yeah, yep. But, yeah, and this also does show the four eighty, four sixty and four forty contour, so it is sloping in that direction, but yeah, there is, because this was a subdivision. This was a lot in a subdivision and all the houses are in the back.
Okay.
What's the distance between proposed lot and proposed septic? It seems like it's more than required.
It might be two hundred feet because it's probably downhill. It looks to, you know, looking at this topo map and the, and the location of these, I'm gonna say it's two hundred feet because it's downhill.
Patty, did you look at the lot width definition?
As far as measuring it at the...
The block list of the building?
Yeah.
So that's two hundred, yes?
At the building it is, yes.
And all points between the frontage and...
No, not at all points between the frontage because then we wouldn't be able to do the lot line revision.
This scales at fifty feet back, it scales right at two hundred, maybe two oh one?
Yes.
Right, there's a second part which says it has to be, this is what it says, at all points between the frontage of the lot and the greater of the line established by the minimum front yard setback or the closest point of any actual or proposed principal building with the lot measured from side lot to, side lot line to side lot line shall not be less than the required frontage.
Proposed house, it's definitely over two hundred.
But at all points...
Okay, I didn't understand it. I thought as long as I had it at the minimum front yard setback, which was the fifty feet, and I had it at the building setback line, that I was okay.
The one that was intended to make a straight lot width requirement, it went back, all the way back to either the front yard setback or the building, whichever was being proposed. It says at all points between the frontage of the lot and the greater of the line established, the litable lot shall not be less than the required frontage.
Definitely in the area, the septic area, just below the two hundred feet.
Is it possible to squeeze it back?
Not, it would compromise, it would compromise the septic system. If I, you know, if I stay the two hundred feet, then we don't need the lot, then there's no sense in doing the lot line revision.
Is that something that's subject to variance?
And with the...
If it's in zoning and not subdivision, then...
That's the zoning definition in the zoning section.
So you're saying it has to be two hundred foot at...
If the lot frontage requirement is two hundred feet, you go straight back at all points from either, whichever is the furthest away, either the front yard setback or the building structure that's proposed, says at all points it has to be at least equal to the minimum lot frontage, just two hundred feet.
Patty could show the residents there at the fifty foot off on the minimum building setback and they'd be fine.
And then what happens if down the road, they do build it in the back, what happens then?
They need a variance.
Then they would need a variance to build that house?
Because it would have a conforming lot.
What section is it on?
It's the definition in, it's on page one forty twelve. I can ask Stacy to look at it tomorrow and she can, she can, we can go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, because if eventually this house is gonna need a variance to be built on, I would rather go through the process now and not have my client be rendered with a potentially unsalable lot.
What you could do is if building inspector does say a variance would be required or doesn't conform, you could tonight make referrals to the zoning board saying, we believe because of the septic system and the applicant's desire to, you can...
And the fact that we're taking a pre-existing non-conforming lot and making it substantially more conforming and it would have both with the lot width, I mean, there's so many, but the laws of the laws, aren't they? I'd rather do it the right way and not have, exactly, that's what I'm saying, I, I wouldn't want to compromise the lot later on in the future.
CBA has nothing to do in November.
Are they really gonna say, are you being...
They have four public hearings.
Bring the sleeping bag?
I'm comfortable with somebody in a condition to the, to the ZBA. And again, what's gonna hinge on is Stacy's review of it this week and if she agrees that it has to be two hundred feet either to front yard setback or the house, all the way back like that, then we would need a variance, but I think there are positives on it, that's taking a non-conforming lot and making it bigger a little bit and designing it in such a way that would allow the sale of a buildable lot.
I think there's just about information on the tree quality on the proposed parcel.
Yeah.
See if there's any, you know, also it's listed as...
What was it, pine, I looked at that.
No, it says wooded somewhere.
Yeah, it's mostly hardwoods, you can see there's some pines on there.
But if you had to push the house back, you'd be cutting a whole lot more trees with two hundred more feet of driveway.
The house and septic that are shown on here are as was already approved on the previous filed subdivision map. And I wanted to show them in that location to show that, you know, that, that it still would be a buildable lot because that's where the septic had previously been approved, otherwise I felt that, you know, this board couldn't have that security, that it's absolutely a buildable lot. This was approved...
What part was subdivided on that map?
Ohioville two ninety-nine associate subdivided. This is the house behind, this is his lot, this is the other lot that he bought. It's a four lot subdivision.
I need four, am I?
Oh, good, it was Butch, wasn't it? Spread front of you. Hi, how was Galvez?
Butch signed this one.
When until ninety-five did I get to sign it?
So is that on right away on the other side of this?
Let's put it down, sorry, right there.
Is that a right away or...
Nope, just a double stone wall, there was an old woods road through there, but... See, that's how they got back to there.
If you left your, your line the same, if they moved the house back, would you get that two hundred feet?
No, the issue is...
Whichever one's further away, it's gotta be, at least be the minimum furniture.
The house, the location of the house now, proposed house, has two hundred foot, but it's not, yeah, it's not two hundred foot all the way back here.
But it would, but for the lot.
Yeah, it would, but for a lot.
And so the other way would be to put the house in the front?
In the front.
And the septic in the back?
I bet they won't want that.
They might not, but I mean, it's an option to...
Yeah, I mean, at this point, nobody is planning on selling the lot or building, you know, they bought it for protection, but they're looking to their future and making sure, and, you know, making sure that that does, they bought, they paid for a buildable lot, so they want to make sure that it's moving that way, not less.
Yes, you don't want to take it out of the, so, two things. One is a motion to forward it to the ZBA for their review of the section that I wrote it down. Don't give me too many papers, everyone. One forty twelve, to identify where the proposed house would be to maintain a buildable lot. And then we'll have a review by the building inspector on that section for her interpretation.
And I guess the other thing that I can do is consult with the client and see if he would be willing to agree, because the septic would still be able to stay in the same location and it's the well and septic really that are tied to the Board of Health. If, if he were amenable to requiring that house to be in the front of the property where the lot width is two hundred feet, then I guess that would also negate the need for an area variance rate. So that's also something I can consult with the client on.
We need a notice of sort, but what's the setback for the existing house?
Right now, thirty-nine point three, is it proposed to be?
Before is it setback?
Oh, I don't know. It exceeded the fifty, so I...
Sixty-eight.
Yeah, his, his, if you wanted privacy, putting, putting the proposed house in a front will negate that issue.
I don't see him selling this property until, he's not gonna sell this property until he sells this property. So at that point, it probably is less of an issue for him, right?
All right, so you talk to your client, I think what we're gonna do, I don't, I'll put a motion on to forward this to the ZBA for possibly reviewing it for an area variance.
Still to also check with Stacy?
If you decide you didn't want to go that way, you could just tell us and we can take it off the agenda, right?
Right, well, the first thing is to consult with Stacy, right?
Right, Stacy will head first and then the second thing will be, we'll send it to the ZBA, we'll put that up there and then if, if Stacy interprets differently or writes up an interpretation, we'll share what that is and...
If you want to make another contingency, if Stacy says yes, it requires a variance and the zoning board does issue the variance, you can put it on for hearing in January, so you would not require another trip.
Right, to come back in December for that.
Right. Here in January, I'm working with the two thousand thirteen town.
It's almost as good a thing if you did that.
Did he have the south line located on this?
No.
We really need to check, if he's going to do that, make sure there is two hundred feet there.
Yes, yep.
All right, I can propose a public hearing on the Gonoski lot line revision for January twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Start going, we're here. So let me get the first motion out, the ZBA motion, we've didn't vote on yet. So we did, made the motion, have a second, do we?
Which motion are we on?
First, first is the ZBA motion.
That requires forwarding it to the building inspector for her interpretation.
Yes.
Code section one four zero point twelve first, and then need be forwarding it to the ZBA for there.
Right.
Contention of the...
So...
Who's making that motion?
Who made that, I'm the one who wants to make the motion.
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion and I, I would further think that we should give a recommendation.
Yeah.
If we can, that can be a separate issue, but...
No, we can, they vote for the way we feel, yeah, what our opinions are on, on voted. So if we're comfortable with granting a variance because of the size of the lot and movement of the non-conforming lot to be more conforming...
Cutting fewer trees possible.
Well, if you, you're talking about the building location in the back.
Oh, putting it in the back.
Yeah, that's the back, that's what, that's the thing. So I just, I would just, it allows the non-conforming lot. It allows a non-conforming lot to become more conforming. On it.
I think he boils maple sap in that lean-to, so he's not cutting any trees because he saps them all.
Okay, motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion, I'll accept a motion to schedule a public hearing on Gonoski lot line revision for January twelfth, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What we'll do is if Stacy comes back and says you're fine with what it is, then we'll, we'll schedule, we'll take, it won't have to be, we'll just schedule a public hearing in November.
Okay.
Okay?
Is Stacy's law degree Trump George?
Yes.
Yes. She can read that book in her sleep.
Yeah, that was number one, I was there, thank you. Yes. Huh, what's that? Okay. Okay.
There's a bunch of you need to ask for-
Yes. I have, I think I have a list of the typical ones that we, yes. The usual. And I forgot about the sidewalk usement, yeah, that was on.
Is it?
They have, oh, over again. Uh, quite a bit, this, this is quite a bit further forward, almost to the, almost to the town of Sokisone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Welcome.
Yeah, one I've asked Georgia, do we take another look at solar? Solar, so we'll take amendment. We had the town of Towanda, North Town, Towanda, North, was it North, or was it just Towanda?
Both North, Towanda and Towanda, I think it's a doubt.
Okay. But what I've asked Georgia is to, rather than try to get through all their justifications and their zoning requirements and things of that sort, to boil down what that is for us with our zoning requirements and things of that sort. And, but we'll get a draft out to us so we can discuss it at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I think we'd spend too much time trying to decipher what rules, special rules they have up there, rather than focusing on what we're really trying to accomplish here. So he'll work that up and we'll have that on the, on the agenda for the next meeting. I have not, I have preliminary site plan on CVS. We have a traffic study, yep?
We have a traffic study that's still got the fueling station on in one of our conferences. We need that updated.
And we have a stormwater document.
Stormwater works.
I should hope so, it's the side of that book. So I was going to bring them in to go over the preliminary site plan. They went before the ZBA last night. They're scheduled for a public hearing in November on their application. Normally the ZBA schedules a public hearing and waits for us to do the secret determination. So, first they'll use that in their decision making. But it's kind of a circle. I mean, obviously if, if they grant the, the-
What variance?
Variance, parking in the front yard and sign there.
So they didn't decide anything else?
No, they just scheduled a November public hearing on it. But it's one of those things that, you know, they need a secret determination from our end so they can go forward with theirs. And if they approve it, we can continue the site plan review. If they don't approve it then we don't have a, probably an application until it's majorly revised. So we still have to do a secret determination from, from the site plan. Obviously if things change, we'd have to go back and do it, but-
Does there's traffic study incorporate wild bearing?
I have to check on that. No, I don't think so.
Is this real? So they, they're doing both, I believe. So they should be able to address it at some point, whether it's consistent with the rules.
Right.
Same company doing both.
You know, last summer, I hope this wasn't measuring, but somebody was measuring traffic on North Platte Corners Road while it was under construction. And so you have to figure that that wasn't a very accurate assessment.
Because everybody avoided it.
Because everybody was avoiding it, exactly.
We could ask Data on whether the traffic council would done on that.
We're waiting on the DOT too for their recommendations on pedestrian and bicycle safety in that area. Wrote that letter to the DOT.
Right. We, you know, one of the things we have to bear in mind is looking at, at that site is, is maintaining of the bicycle safety around the site. What do we have to do to make sure that is there? But, so I will, so we'll have them on the agenda for next meeting. And I have not received anything, any updates from Mohawk yet. So they're back into November now.
Does the thruway have to comment on this since it's adjacent?
It would have the opportunity, it should, notice it's part of the lead agency for me, whether they're going to comment.
There's drainage that's going on the thruway, so they'll comment.
Well, if they were wanting to do bridge repairs or something. I would presume they control repairs on that, whether it's theirs or not, you know? Goes over there, right?
It would be the, the OT, I think. They would have to get approval for the DOT structure, I think.
Okay, anything else?
I don't think I'll be at the next meeting.
At one point I recall, CVS, there was a question raised about wetlands, one of the wetlands on the property. And I'm just wondering if it's something we need to resolve.
What would be a good thing to resolve?
So our resolver seems to be, have commissioned for a while.
Oh, Spider? Is he okay?
Lion is it?
What?
Lion is he?
No, oh, that's terrible.
Considering all the walking in the woods he does?
That's awful.
It was like if anybody would get a, Spider. I have to talk to-
There's no backup weapons, is there?
What we're doing if we have any backup.
Oh, boy, what an irony. The leading cause of getting arm disease is cutting down wetlands.
Or even walking through and walking in a lot.
Yeah, exactly.
You have to cut them down. All right, we'll, we'll have to address that issue going forward on that.
There were two applications that needed the wetland looked at. Stacy and I were going to look at them and both of them backed out, so I don't know what that means.
We hope by November 1st to be up at the landfill site with the planning board offices. Your folders will be up there, so you won't be able to walk through the parking lot to get them. It will be a transition period for everything. And so things will be a little topsy-turvy for a couple of weeks, both prior to and after that for a while. So bear with us if we can't find something or, or somebody gets dropped or anything else like that. So I don't know what else to say on that, but it will be a date that we'll have to have them. And then we'll see what happens here. Anything else before the board? Have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?